Good evening. Today is July the tenth, twenty twenty. The time is now five P M. The work session in the city of Trinidad will now come to order. And tonight we have. Let's see. Pretty much three items on there for discussion. Item one is landfill enterprise fund. Item two, the grove influx of branches, limbs and stumps in the landfill. I'm sorry, that's wrong. Discussion of landfill fees for specific solid waste items. Item two, discussion regarding resuming in-person council meetings. And item three, discussion regarding DOLAG as first round grant round. We'll start off first with the landfill fees. And just to let everybody know, I brought that to Mike's attention because I don't know how many of you have been out to the landfill over the last, you know, year or so. But we continue to get a horrendous pile of trees and shrubbery out there at no cost to anybody who dumps out there. And like I said, I've taken some of my stuff out there too, and I almost feel guilty not having to pay for it filling up the way it is. So I brought it to Mike's attention, and I felt that we should need to discuss this because I really believe that there needs to be some kind of fee for the trees that are dumped into the landfill. Mike, do you want to mention anything before we get started?
Uh, no, Mayor, I think that pretty much sums it up that, and Tom will present, but we've been taking branches for free for a year and a half, maybe two years now, and they are, they consume a lot of time, equipment, and, and we do it for free, and I don't, that's part of it, but we definitely, because of the enterprise, need to start charging for that. I'll let Tom take it from there.
Well, the other thing too is that, you know, we have that shredder that's out there that we're not using and for whatever reason. But if there's something wrong with it, you know, by charging for a fee, it would allow us to, if that, when that thing does break down, to be able to, you know, fix it. So that we can, you know, get something done with that, so. The other thing, and I don't know if Tom has this, you know, we do have in our packet information of what other areas are charging. But I didn't see anything in there of any recommendations that, you know, Tom and you and maybe the directors have come up a schedule of any kind for the trees and also mentioning, you know, couches and chairs and mattresses and box springs, so. Go ahead and Tom, and let, let Tom go ahead and take it away and see what he has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mayor, members of council, good evening. Um, as you did say, as Mike said, that back in November nineteen, the landfill became an enterprise zone and it's pretty much on its own now. It's no longer part of the general fund. We got to get some income coming in. And as noted, the brush pile that's there now is a sizable pile. And we are not charging for branches or trees. As, as per the ordinance that was approved in two thousand and eighteen, put into effect January one of nineteen, the yard waste will be free when delivered to the designated brush area, otherwise thirty-one dollars a ton. And we have not been charging anything for this. Um, either for individual homeowners or for allers, including the county and other large contractors, so. Uh, what I would propose would be just to move yard waste, in this case, to the minimum of ten dollars, like everything else is, for, for example, for pickup trucks and small trailers. And then to weigh the rest, if it's over thirty, over a ton, then they would pay the thirty-one dollar fee for that. This would also help to offset the cost of disposing of tree stumps, we get quite a few of. And virtually even the shredder will not handle those, they're just too large. The shredder, while we're thinking about, the shredder is operable. You just purchased a new remote, you may have that picture in your packet. It will allow us to safely operate that machine with one person. It has not been operable till now because our safety director has determined that it would be unsafe if we tried to do it with one person and not have two, an operator for the shredder itself and an operator for the machine to load the shredder. So we're hoping to get that going here very quickly. Regardless, it's going to take personnel quite a while to get rid of that pile, as you can see. It would be nice to have a second person, or actually a fourth person on staff, I'm sure firmly we have three. And just for example, last week, we just measured the loads coming in last week from Tuesday through Friday. Tuesday through Friday, we had sixty pickup loads and small trailers in brush. Eight large roll-offs of brush. So figuring even the ten dollar minimum, that's six hundred, almost seven hundred dollars, would be were taken in for branches in the last four days last week. So that would easily pay for a fourth person or for, as Mike said, maintenance on the machines. And all of our machines, as everyone knows, are becoming, I call it, elder at this point. So we do need to work, work on something there to get some new machinery, new equipment. The couches, mattresses, I call them upholstered furniture, I have those notes here. Most of the landfills that I've talked to are charging a minimum of five dollars for upholstered type furniture, like couches, chairs, sofas, love seats, ornaments, not just the box springs. It's not unheard of. These items take up so much air space, and they're so hard to crush and to break into the face, that it requires a little bit extra work for the guy on the face to get them crushed down and put in there. I would highly recommend seeing five dollars. I'm trying to keep it simple for the guys out there. The ten dollar minimum for branches, thirty-one per ton is, was on the landfill fee chart that we have distributed, that hooks it up to landfills, but it's not something new. We'd have to add the furniture pieces being for five dollars a piece. But that would be an easy step ahead. As reported a couple weeks ago in the department meeting, the landfill is, as of the end of May, we did have a surplus of revenue over our expenses. However, we had some serious, um, maintenance issues with equipment, and that is no longer the case. We are now in reds. Not less than the red, but we're in the red. That doesn't give us anything towards an extra person. It does not give us anything towards new equipment. And our, we kind of blew our maintenance, the equipment maintenance budget by, I think it was the middle of February this year, I believe. I will answer any questions you have. That's what I have for presentation. Uh, you do have the, excuse me, you do have the four other landfill charts in your packet. And that is an older, unfortunately, an older, uh, chart. I would say that's by some early nineteen, but the prices are still. What was I saying? Five dollars what the yard cost, what the dollar was. Do you have any questions that you weren't willing to answer?
Let's go ahead and get some questions in. Ms. Grego, do you have any, any questions for Mr. Beach?
I have a question, maybe a concern or comment. Do you? I, I know there's a lot of commercial tree trimmers and a lot of commercial landscapers that do business in Trinidad. Do they get that, their debris and their trees and landscaping material? Can they dump debris?
Yeah, they do.
And that's why we bring that up, Karen.
Yeah. See, and, yeah, yeah. I, I just agree with, we, we need to increase our, or start charging for the tree trimmings and the landscaping stuff. And, you know, when, I've noticed around town, we have a commercial dumpster down at our office, and people keep throwing furniture in there because it's big and it's free. They don't have to haul it to, to the landfill. But I, I think, Tom, maybe we should up that to ten dollars a piece for furniture. Five dollars doesn't even make it worthwhile, I don't think, but.
That's fine, that doesn't count.
Yeah.
If, I don't want to see too much of it after the droid. That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Karen?
Exactly, so, just my two cents.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
What was the reason that we passed the ordinance back in twenty eighteen to make it no cost to drop off yard waste? Does anybody remember why we did that?
I think part of it was that they were going to turn some of that stuff into mulch and then give it back to the community. I think that was going to be.
Did that ever happen?
No.
Uh, has this community ever tried having like an incentive weekend in other communities? I know they have a weekend where you can drop off things for free. And it's usually twice a year, and it's sort of around the time when people are doing the major pickups in their, their yard. The rest of the time of the year, you have to pay for it to be recalled there or to drop it off. But if we're looking to have some kind of incentive to have people take care of their property and not to disincentivize taking care of property by charging, would you like to consider that?
Well, one of the things that does happen, I know it's once a year. Uh, this year unfortunately, we were not able to have that. That was the Comcast Care Days, uh, where it was open to the public for, for dumping. I think that was the only day, unless Mike can correct me on that, I don't know for sure. But that was, um, like in May, when people are beginning to do yard work.
Yeah, I think like in, maybe in October.
Mayor, if I may, we normally do end of April and end of September.
Okay.
And we already, we lost our end of April this year because of COVID nineteen and all that. Uh, we are doing scheduling a September twenty ninth, I'll quote me on that, in that vicinity. Maybe the twenty-sixth, there's a free day at this point. And we are resuming Saturday hours starting this Saturday, the eighteenth, at the landfill, because we have so many requests from people to do that.
Okay, I was on your, so that's great.
Okay. Mr. Shu, do you have any questions? Do you have any other questions, Ms. Ogletree?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Shu?
No, I don't have any questions, Tom. I think it's a good idea what you're doing. Uh, for me to go with Montero said, uh, I think five bucks is probably pretty, the only problem happens there is if you charge too much, people are gonna start dumping it everywhere.
Do you have a?
I mean, that, that, that would, that would be my only thought is that, you know, they're dumping in Mr. Grego's dumpster, and we need to get that taken, you know, they'll be doing that everywhere.
Do you have a suggestion for a dollar amount? Frank, do you have a recommendation?
I, I think, I think five would be great. I, I think what Tom was saying, I think that works great.
Okay. Mr. Goodall?
Rusty, I hate to stop you in seven, but we can't, but we can barely hear you. I don't know if there's something on your end you can do to help us out.
All right, is it better when I unplug my headphones?
Yep.
Bye. Hang on, watch, I'll take care of this. Oh, right in the trash, that was too much. Um, I'll, I'll start back from the beginning, man. I'm so glad we're reopening on the weekends because the amount of garbage I seen out there was crazy that people were dumping, and I know it was added work. Number two is we've been trimming all our trees and branches here at the top on in our parks. I noticed the huge pile, uh, out there, so I've stopped hiring, hauling what I have, and I have a massive pile yet until we can figure this out. The commercial side, I think, was totally taking advantage of the fact that we were taking it for free. That should have always been just for residential, uh, people alone. So I'm glad we're gonna start charging again, and I'm glad to pay our fair share. Same with the furniture. We need to be paying for that, having a hotel. And the amount of mattresses and furniture that people in my park, in the mobile homes dumped by my dumpsters, I know what a burden that is and the amount of space it takes up. So I'm fully support, supportive of the five dollar charge for the furniture. And I am fully supportive of charging for all the yard waste again, especially branches, stumps, and that kind of stuff, for sure. That's what I got. I think that covered everything I said the first time, but I don't remember.
That did. Uh, Mr. DiBono, do you have any questions?
Now, the, the five dollar charge for the furniture, like, I agree, I concur with Rusty, is fine. You, you know, like what Tom alluded to with the box springs and the mattresses, they are a big concern because they do take up so much space. And I was reading there, there's some landfills that won't even take some of the box springs. They actually tell some of their people to cut up their box spring to bring it in because the springs get caught up in the shredder and so forth. But, uh, yeah, five dollars is great. Uh, ten dollars for the trees, uh, you know, I, I have a, an arroyo by my dad's over there. And a lot of people, you know, I venture to say that even the ten dollars, you're gonna find a lot more tree branches and shrubs and vegetation in more arroyos than you are maybe in the landfill to start. So I'm just saying that.
Okay. Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions?
Um, I, uh, have to just have a couple of, uh, this is for Tom, uh, potentially Mike. I was wondering, the quality of the, um, mulch that comes out of the machine is, it's not really um, useful for ornamentation mulch, is it?
It wouldn't be ornamentation types mulch. It would be good for basic underneath of, you know, like new saw type, a mix in the soils type thing, because it's, it's still gonna be a sweet, orange.
It's like an amendment mulch then?
Uh, I'm not sure what that is, but yeah, it's pretty good sized stuff. It gets smaller. We can order, it gets smaller even though we get a little.
Okay, um, have, as, I, I, uh, heard, I've read some of, um, recycling lines that use mulch for different products. Have, have those options at all been explored? I mean, if maybe we can monetize the shred, um, we would, we could potentially, potentially avoid charging for it if, and that would alleviate, uh, arroyos. I mean, I, those are, those are pretty far out there ideas. I'm just wondering if that has even been worked out?
If not at this point, because we haven't really had a pile working.
Okay.
We've experimented, we've, we've got the machine running. Yes, this is, we first bought the machine, got it working, and then safety issue came up. So we really haven't made any headway as far as making the pile to have available to offer.
Okay, um, I, I agree with, uh, the need to have, uh, collect revenue from it, either if it's from the product itself or, or coming in, and also furniture, but there's always that fine line. And you can't legislate that, uh, people won't dump, uh, items out there. It's already against the law. But if, if we, if we, uh, raise the price to a point where people start that, that's, then, you know, we fixed one problem and caused another. So it's a difficult situation that I, I think we need to start charging something.
Uh, from my end, I think that five dollar on that miscellaneous sofas, chairs, I think is a good number. Uh, you know, ten dollars per pickup, I think is fine for the time being. Uh, the question I have, Tom, uh, is, you know, that piece of equipment that's out there now to, do you guys have like a grappler hook or something to load that on that? Or is that something that you guys are gonna use for a loader, or how are you gonna load that on?
Do you remember recently, we purchased a new wheel loader, brand new, John Deere, beautiful machine that they scratched the first day, and I was like, oh, we got a bucket. We, what we bought, we also bought what was called a grappler hook, uh, for that. And it, it uses a regular, uh, three yard bucket, I think it's a three yard. But then it also has a clamp shelf that is made specifically for brush and tires and that kind of equipment. It's, it's, it's there, it's ready to go. That's what we have used to load the shredder when we've been experimenting with it. And around with it, so, yeah, it's, it's gonna come in real.
Now, the question, the other question I have is, uh, how is that machine? Because, you know, I'm sure with some of that stuff, there's a lot of rock and stone in there. How does that machine handle that? Without, without breaking down?
I'm sorry, in its former life, it was used at a implement dealer to chew up and spit out, um, pallets and packaging equipment. For yard, yard tractors that had red head metal pieces in it, and it'll, it'll chew up. It's pretty stout.
Okay, good. Okay.
Should be an issue. And if, if it's too large, it won't go through the chute, and it'll, it'll stop. It won't, it's dangerous.
Okay. Uh, the next question I have is, you know, you're talking about maybe needing a, another person out there. And of course, for the time being, that would probably be a full-time person for a short period of time or a period of time until we get that entire pile bundled down. Uh, but after that, would that person, would that person be just a temporary person, like maybe once a week, uh, once a month? What's your thoughts?
Well, I, honestly, we could use a person full-time. Um, I don't think it would be an issue. We, if, if it is, we could maybe, because we're an enterprise zone, I don't know how that would work. Enterprise fund, excuse me, um, but sharing a person with street and bridge perhaps, or with another partner. But there, there is enough right now, and we are still under the auspices of C D P A G and their, that we're under. Uh, it would, it would be good to have somebody full-time. Mike and I haven't really spoke, we spoke of it, but not in detail. Uh, it would be something for next year's budget, perhaps, see what we can do. And I think we can certainly keep someone busy full-time.
Yeah, I think that would be the biggest issue there is that if, you know, throughout the year, if the money that we would, uh, save by charging would offset, uh, you know, what a person would cost for personnel. So that would be, that would be something that we'd have to know for sure.
If I may, we've been doing electronic recycling now for almost, like, nine months or so. We had our second pickup the other day from Blue Star Recyclers, our partners in prime. And we actually lost a couple bucks on that. This, this go around. Last time we paid several hundred dollars off of our deal. This time we lost a few bucks. But it's okay. I'm not concerned as to the fact at this point as I am with the fact that there are very few TVs being thrown over the gate out there when we're not there. I thought that would be an issue, if people would wanna pay, but they'd throw it over the thing or they'd drop it on the side of the road. That has not been the case. I think that was kind of interesting, that, that people are accepting it, they're bringing it out to this big, big projection type TV's that the guys are working on, destroying the wood and plastic in the end and the base, taking electronics and putting it in. That way we don't take the base of the plastic and the woods. We're getting the hang of it, and it's, it's worked out far better, I think, for the really planned with the, the station.
Okay, I guess, you know, we're gonna move on this. You know, Mike, you have that information, and between you and, and staff can work that out. Uh, but what I would like to see is when you bring forward that ordinance, that you bring, uh, see what the cost of that, an extra person would be, so that we are aware of, you know, how this is all gonna roll out, so we have some idea. Mike, do you have any other, any other questions?
Uh, no, Mayor, nothing to ask. Uh, we'll, we'll get together an ordinance and bring it forward.
Okay. Rusty, you have a question?
Is my microphone working now? Can y'all hear me better?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, cool, the new headphones work, all right. I think it's important as we do go forward with this, we have a big campaign for notification of the public on, uh, implementation of the new funds, so people are aware.
Sure.
That'd be the one thing. I wanna make sure that we let the public know we will be charging if that word out there.
Okay.
I can put it on the radio, Mayor. Rusty, I've mentioned it three times today about the Saturday reopening.
Fantastic, yes.
Well, that's a good reason why we have a radio guy in, in, on council now, I guess.
If the F C C allows it.
Okay, let's go on to, uh, Mike, do you need anything else from us, or you're good with everything?
No, I'm good with that, Mayor. We'll put together an ordinance, bring it forward.
Okay. Okay. Uh, item number two, discussion regarding resuming in-person council meetings. I know that, um, you know, that it would be ideal if there was a way that we could do this. Uh, my personal feeling right now is the way the country is going, and even New Mexico, I'm not sure if you read that over the weekend where they have shut off, anybody who comes from a lot of state to their state parks, they're turning them away. So this thing is really beginning to build again. And, you know, I don't know how many of our staff people have pre-existing conditions, or even people on council have pre-existing conditions. Uh, that I don't know, and, uh, but that, that's a concern. I know, Mike, you would really like to get back to regular meetings, but I'm just really concerned that with the way that this thing is taken on, it's, uh, creating so many doggone issues, but I'll, I'll let the council go ahead and speak and see what their thoughts are. Uh, Ms. Grego, you wanna go ahead and get started?
Yes, sir. I pretty much echo what you just stated, Mayor. You know, uh, I don't, I thought at one point we had a handle on this, and it seems like we don't have a handle on it. So rather than start something and then have to abruptly end, end it and go back to go-to meetings, I think for the time being, we'd be better off just status quo. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Ogletree?
I, I agree with both of your comments, and I think that, um, city council meeting this way is acting as a good example to how you work around things that are difficult and you make it work, and we're getting work done. And I think we're actually having fairly efficient meetings this way. So I, I think until we have some clear direction that there's an all clear for us to gather in large groups, I don't think we need some nonsense.
Mr. Shu?
Yeah, I kind of agree with them too. I, you know, today on the news, cars, springs and kevlar both spiked really bad again. So I, I think, or my, my opinion is I, I think what we're doing right now is the best for us.
Okay. Mr. Goodall? Um, go ahead, okay.
So, so when I brought this up, the, my main concern is, in, in the other, last council meeting was the prime example where, uh, we lost Councilwoman Grego. We had a vote, she comes back, and you said, hey, we voted six. Uh, what would your vote have been, like it even mattered at that point? So when you say we're working fairly efficient, and when we're representing this community, I'm not sure fairly efficient is good enough in my eyes. I'm not saying I'm ready to jump back into City Hall, uh, and throw caution to the wind. That was never my intention when I brought this up. I've seen frustration in other people's face, uh, faces. People have had stuff to say, that we don't get to have the full comments apart. I've lost, uh, my. I've lost, uh, my video and audio both, had to log out, log back in. You see, I've seen other members do the same thing. What I'm saying is, I've seen other councils and commissions on TV where they're reporting with partitions in between steps they've taken to make it safer. And if that's not the path we're gonna go, then what I'm looking for is a better effective system that we're gonna use. Everybody needs to be heard. We need to get everybody's comments to make sure everything is taken into consideration so that we're serving our public the way we should be and most efficiently. That's the reason I brought this up. And if it's not back in-person meetings, then it's finding a way to make this system work better. Uh, those are my concerns and why I brought this up and what I wanted to have to say.
Uh, Mr. DiBono?
Well, as I see it, I would like the format for the council meetings to pretty much remain the same. Uh, you know, the curve and the numbers are growing up. All it takes is one of us, uh, to come in contact with someone that's infected from another area and the outcome's not gonna be very favorable. So I'd like to keep it the same.
Okay. Mr. Williamson?
I agree with Rusty.
Okay. Well, I do know that, you know, we've had some issues periodically and it, it is frustrating, uh, I would say. But for the most part, you know, they have been going fairly well. As I said, there's been some times where people have lost video or audio. Um, uh, Mike, I'm not sure, like today so far, we haven't had any issues, which is really ideal. Uh, we'll see on Monday night or Tuesday night, see how things go then. Uh, you know, I know that other communities, uh, you know, they're putting partitions up and all kinds of stuff trying to, uh, meet, you know, in person. Uh, maybe they have a bigger dais, I don't know, maybe bigger room. I, I've watched some stuff in Colorado Springs, but they have a pretty large, uh, room where they meet where they've actually got large, you know, petitions between them. So anyway, but I, I think it's just something that we stay the course as of right now. Uh, I would like to still, uh, whenever we do have a, uh, very important executive session that we still can meet, uh, on occasion. When that does come up, I think that would be something that we need to probably do, which we have had, you know, like for instance, when we had the discussion of, with Mike and, you know, Irie Mike and a couple of other issues. Uh, I think that would be the time that we should meet in person. So we'll take that as it, as it comes.
So, Mayor, by no means did, did I suggest that I wanted to have these meetings. I just, it was brought up several times at work sessions, somebody wanted to talk about it. So I put it on your agenda.
Sure.
Um, wanted to let you know that legit, logistically, in our council chambers, uh, I've looked at the partitions. Um, it really won't work because you're so closely seated and, and Marty would have to, uh, bring the plexiglass all the way back, he'd be in his own plexiglass cubicles. Um, we actually, uh, look forward to plan to, uh, give Gonzalez, and I see she's on, I, I don't know if she wants to say anything, but to have municipal court, um, in, in person and based on, on the seating and everything, we could fit thirteen people in there, uh, with social distancing and everything. Well, if you take councils, seven councils, uh, plus the city attorney, myself, and a clerk, that's ten. So you could have four people. So by no means was I pushing for this, I just wanted to have that discussion and let you know that. Yeah, it's gonna be tough. So it would be a hybrid of in-person, with go-to meeting, and then we have to figure out a ton of the videos each other. So, um, basically, uh, it's out there. And I, I appreciate Kim being online and I don't know if she has anything to add.
Mayor, before you call on Ms. Gonzalez, I can please, I, I wanna say, I had an email exchange with her today. And I just, I wanna say this, it's kinda called meeting in, if you're recognizing Ms. Gonzalez, is I, I'm hoping she will, will give us her, her thoughts. But I wanna say, in response to the email I've sent her, and then she said to me, "In light of the increase of cases across the state and nation, I would strongly suggest that meetings stay virtual. I would not suggest those with underlying health conditions, although sixty and over, if this can be done virtually. If they are not able due to unforeseen reasons, I would say no more than ten with very strict, the social distancing guidelines in place per at six feet or twenty-eight square feet from each other require masks, single entrance and exits, hand washing, hand sanitizer available, refrain from gatherings before or after meetings, good ventilation systems, plexiglass barriers impossible, end of perent." And so, um, with that in a good sense, and I, I'd like to say too, that just as you have this conversation, it is impossible, I think, to really talk about a return to normal without a compromise of those things that are working in fighting the virus current. That is masking, social distancing, and not having large groups of people, especially if anyone is, is exposed to the virus. But Mayor, if you would please, I would ask Ms. Gonzalez for her thoughts in addition to what I, I just read. Please.
Kim, can you go ahead and comment if you, if you have any comments?
Absolutely. Thank you for having an interwork session today. And, you know, I do understand the frustrations of not meeting in person, the technology difficulties, the Wi-Fi hotspot problems. We face that as well. Um, it's been a nightmare for all of us, I think. Um, but going forward, I would strongly discourage this left then again, if we can, going in person. I'd really like to see if our elected officials could actually set a good, um, example for our community going forward in showing that we can still go virtual. Uh, if you do have to go for any unforeseen reasons into a in-person meeting, making sure you follow those strict social distancing guidelines, um, masks or hand washing, screening prior to attending the meeting before you get into the facility altogether. Uh, we are, uh, seeing a large increase in cases across the state as well as the nation. Um, we have basically boomeranged back with regard to, going back to March, where we're having a supply chain that is broken. Uh, we have, uh, lack of PPG again, lack of testing supplies. Testing is taking up to eleven to twelve days to come back at the state lab. So if we could do our part and be proactive within our community, um, I would be grateful for that. I, I do understand if you guys have to do those other options, but, um, that was just my thoughts going forward.
Well, Kim, I, I will tell you this, uh, you know, we are, uh, abiding by everything that you're saying right now. Uh, you know, when people come into City Hall, they check in, you know, what, what time they've checked in, who you are, take your temperature, ask the questions, the proper questions. Uh, like I said, we have had a, I think, a couple of executive sessions where I felt that it was necessary that we have, that we have our council members in person with the proper social distancing. And at that time, we probably had no more than, I think, at any time, nine people in city council. And of course, we spread out that social distancing property. So if you don't, like I said, sound like you don't have an issue with that, as long as we keep those at a very minimal amount, which we will do. Uh, you know, just to, you know, make sure that we, um, are doing what we're supposed to be doing. So I, I think that if it's okay, we will move forward with that particular, and just kinda stay the course that we're doing right now. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everything you guys have been doing. Sorry, that's, uh, my little girl here. Uh, but yes, thank you. And if you guys don't have questions or need any additional guidance, please feel free to reach out to us at the House of Representatives.
There we will. All right, thank you very much. Uh, any other questions from council or concerns?
Thank you, Kim. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go ahead and move, let's go on to item number three, discussion regarding DOLA August first grant round. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council. So, uh, I wanted to get this out in front of you, uh, as we have an August first deadline for our DOLA grants. Uh, if you recall, we have several, uh, options. But if you recall, in, um, April of this year, pre-COVID, we approved submitting for state historic, uh, fund of grants for the Fox Theater. Um, and in that application, it was a request from the state historic fund for two hundred thousand. Then we would enter into a long-term lease with the, uh, Fox West Theater Alliance. They would ask for state, uh, historic tax credits. Um, and then we agreed to submit for a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, DOLA grant for exterior rehab of the Fox. Well, that was before COVID and, and probably when, uh, everyone thought, you know, that everything would be running smoothly and we'd be able to also apply for a Fisher's Peak, uh, kind of a, uh, study, aside from the park study, but for the, uh, county and city to jointly, uh, apply for, uh, study on, on impacts of the park and what, uh, what it would do to surrounding areas, the roads, the trails, and, and all of that. So, uh, in my discussion with Ms. Marshall, she said there's, uh, they've cut back on the funding, of course. Um, she said, "We may have to choose one to go forward if we apply for both." Um, I've also had a, a discussion with, uh, Mr. Doricamp at the county to see, he would sponsor one and we sponsored the other. Uh, so with all that being said, there's more discussions to be had, but August first grant round, we only have, uh, one regular council meeting to put together a resolution. So I just wanted to put this out in front of you for discussion that we have already, in essence, committed to apply for a DOLA grant for the Fox Theater. And I don't want to pass such on the possibility of, um, the Fisher's Peak impact, um, study that could be done, um, in conjunction with the county. So I'm putting that out there. Um, I'm not sure how it's gonna play out, but, uh, one of the council didn't know that.
If I'm, if I'm correct too, Mike, you're talking about that money, uh, or the grant for the Fisher's Peak. Uh, if they were to get money for that, if, if, let's say the county does it, uh, that would go toward to help some of the master planning money that is needed. Uh, but it would be part of how the, outside of the infrastructure type stuff that's going on, that has to go on up there, it would, so it'd be part of it, from what I gathered, correct?
Correct, correct, that is correct.
Okay. So let's go ahead, any questions from council, Ms. Grego?
I have no questions. I just think that there's so many, um, entities involved in Fisher's Peak. And if we've committed to the Fox West, I think that's the direction we need to go. I, there's so many groups and so many, um, professionals who are working with that. I can't imagine that they wouldn't have some sort, maybe not as in-depth study as we would do, but I think they might be, in my, I think something out there we should check and see. I have no, nothing.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
I'm, I'm sorry, I not understand this completely. So does that either or thing, we can either apply for the Fisher's Peak grant money for the Fox West Theater?
If we were to do it ourselves, it would be an either or. But in this particular case, like Mike is thinking, is that, uh, the city would apply for, uh, the Space Gray project and ask the county if they'd be willing to sponsor the, uh, the Fisher's Peak. Or we, we would do the Fox one, and they would do the, uh, Fisher's Peak project.
Okay, well, that seems like a reasonable approach.
Mr. Shu?
I agree with Mike, I think we should go with what he's, uh, gotten work done.
Okay. Mr. Goodall?
Yeah, I think that'll be good. I, I would hope that the commissioners would have no problem going after one to allow us to go after the other. I know in some of the meetings, uh, like the, uh, one I intended for, okay, there goes the brain, it'll be back in a minute. But they mentioned that a lot of grant money is out there right now because with everything that's going on, people have not applied for it. So I think we definitely need to be on the ball, applying for every opportunity we have because I think there's less competition for some of this grant money right now.
Exactly. Mr. DiBono?
I agree with Mr. Valentine, I think that's, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Williamson?
I agree with Mr. Valentine, he's asking us, no questions.
Okay. Uh, Mike, uh, if we were to go after, what was that dollar amount for the Fox Theater two hundred, do you say?
Two hundred thousand, uh, headner. It would be the same for the Fisher's Peak. It's a tier one grant, uh, it'd be the match. With the Fox, we already, we can use the match from the state historic fund to kind of leverage it.
Okay.
Fisher's Peak, we're gonna have to figure out if, uh, who our partners would be in, in the match. But, um, I'm in the process and it's a tight timeframe, um, but.
Yeah, that's good to know that we could, I, I was aware of that, but I forgot temporarily that we could leverage that, uh, that money to, you know, for the Fox deal, so that's good. Now, with the, if the county were to okay, uh, and move forward with it, if they were to apply for the Fisher's Peak deal, uh, depending on the dollar amount, uh, there would be a match there. And, uh, I wonder if they're, what position they are in to, uh, do the match.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I just had that discussion with, uh, uh, Mr. Doricamp. And, uh, we're supposed to get together with, uh, Ms. Marshall from DOLA to try and, um, try and figure this whole thing out and how, how we can match and move forward. Uh, I know that, uh, Mr. Garcia, the director, was really, uh, supportive of a joint effort between,
Right.
uh, city and county to go forward with something for Fisher's Peak. So, um, we'll use that to our advantage and try and figure it out.
Typically, what is that match, fifty percent match?
Usually it's fifty-fifty, correct? So if we go for, if we ask for two hundred thousand, we match for two hundred thousand. So, um, we did not plan for this. Um, there's, there's one caveat that is a possibility. And, uh, in speaking with Ms. Marshall, um, there's the August round and then the December round, uh, which we may go for. But, um, the funds are dwindling, the state has really cut the budgets back. Um, so I don't know if we, if we wait. Um, I, I know the county is thinking, they, they usually go each round for some road project. So, um, I asked, uh, uh, Mr. Doricamp if they would defer. He's, he's gonna be talking and, and we're gonna have a conference call with Ms. Marshall, so.
Uh, you know, going forward.
Mike?
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. DiBono.
Mike, and I'm not sure, but, uh, you know, the Department of Local, the local affairs, does that grant funding, does it come from state severance taxes like for the extraction of the oil and gas?
That is correct. What we are asking for is the energy impact assistance money, and that's, that is severance, uh, tax money. And, um, with the oil and gas, maybe in more, they're stretching.
Could that cause the city to go into an election to receive those funds?
No, no, we are, yeah, totally, you know, we keep rules, we're not restricted by that.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I was gonna mention, Mike, uh, you know, with all of these possibilities of funding coming up with matches that we're going to have to come up with, um, I think that, uh, you know, I think that, you know, our second quarter funding and possibly third quarter funding that we typically get, we need to maybe plan for that in, for these matches possibly, so keep that in the back of your mind so that we can use that, those dollars there. Council, have any other questions on this? See, Mike, I think you hit it right on the head, is that, you know, we'll go after the one for the Fox and see what we could do with the one for the Fisher's Peak, if the county wants to do that. I have a thought on that, and I'll call you on that later. I gotta think about it some more, but I'll think about that. Just before we end up, see if anybody else has any other items that they want to bring up for discussion in future work sessions. I just want to let you know, these are all of the work sessions that we have, that basically, that we are gonna have to plan for. One, we talked about the streamlined billing. The short-term rentals, I think we still need to approach that. The big thing that we need to talk about, I talked to Mike about this, is that our upcoming budget. I think we need to have some time on a real, here shortly, on a work session to see what priorities council might have. You know, we need to maybe have a, at some point, maybe something on broadband. We talked about a recreational coordinator and how that would be funded if possible. I think we still need to talk about the legalities of murals. There's still some more discussion, I think, to be had, I think, about the marijuana consumption clubs. I think another one that's gonna come in front of us pretty quick is gonna be the Fox Development Agreement, I'm pretty sure. We'll also have to have a discussion on the Cooper Canyon, is how do we move forward there? There might be a couple of others out there, so I don't know. There's some other stuff, so if council has any thoughts of any others, please let me know.
Well, at some point, we gotta be finished addressing codes. Codes need to be coming back up with the changes and stuff so we can get those finalized and adopted, right?
I think that will come forth in an ordinance, first reading, wouldn't it, at this point? Is that correct?
That is correct. Mayor, as a matter of fact, that was one of my points tonight to mention to you that we're gonna have the grandees code scheduled for the first reading this coming meeting.
Okay.
That's all.
Does, does council have any other items that you feel are pertinent to maybe consider in the near future? Yes, Ms. Grego?
What about the Commons area, it's based in Jamaica. Do we have to do something with that, Mike?
We do. We have to come up with some funding. We are close with the funding, and we have received the construction documents from the architect already after approval of their feet. They turned around and got those to us almost immediately, within a couple of weeks, so we have, we have those. We're putting together a packet to bid the project out. When I say "we," that's Wally and the Commons Board. And I'm sure there will be a work session, discussion prior, like, yes.
Okay. Let me write that down. So Commons area, I'm trying to keep track of all of these. And what I'll do is I'll get with Mike. Okay, and I'll keep, I'll get with Mike to see which of these items I think, and how, going forward, how soon we're gonna have to have, how soon we're going to have to have a work session on these. I think we have a couple of questions. Ms. Ogletree first, and then we'll go to Mr. DiBono?
This is Laura, just a follow-up of a discussion from council, where you're talking about the possibility of a work session on code enforcement. Mr. Valentine kindly set up contacts with me and Chief Coriosso and Sergeant Caddell, so we're working to set something up so I can go just sit with them and learn. And I just wanted to open it up to any other, one other council person, if there's anybody new who would like to also be educated about that, how that process works, I'd have to.
I'd really like that, if possible, I'd really like to do that.
Okay, I'll connect with you then later.
My availability is tough, but if you let me know when it is, I will do my absolute best to be there.
Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Mr. DiBono, you have a question?
I would also.
Mr. DiBono?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how pertinent this is, but even before I was on City Council, I've called the city police department dispatch a number of times because I witnessed out of town, Carter's vehicles, even larger vehicles, semis on commercial, they're parked in the wrong direction, and they're parked at an angle, so the rear end is protruding onto the street. And it's kind of ridiculous that people have to dodge other cars as they're going by in commercial. I almost took somebody's door off the other day. And I just think that maybe Charlie, Mr. Coriosso, can maybe have some, somebody just stay there fifteen, twenty minutes to see, because it seems like it's always after five o'clock, somebody from out of town, out of state, gets in a hurry, they park at an angle in the wrong direction, and it's just, it's not right. I mean, they should adhere to the laws like everybody else does.
Yeah, just have Charlie follow up on that and see what he thinks. Ms. Grego, do you have a question?
No, I was gonna say, I'd like to do the code enforcement seminar as well, but we have to be careful because of this, the number of.
Sunshine Law.
Council people.
Rusty, do you have a question?
Yeah. If we're gonna talk about the Commons area and funding, we gotta have the discussion about Noah's Ark and wrapping up the funding and getting that done. We need to get Noah's Ark moved in to that building and out of Mr. Chaminos' property and get that wrapped up also, so that's gonna have to be part of our discussions and work session also.
Yeah, we have, we have quite a list, people.
Noah's Ark plans are in town's hands, reviewing, we'll be putting those out again also, and part of the issue is knowing how much funding, seeing what the bids are, see if we can do some value engineering, what's to be done, so. Yep, those are definitely on the list.
You know, that's why I brought up, you know, our second quarter marijuana funds. You know, we'll have to take a look and see where maybe a lot of that money might have to go to finalizing some of these projects to get them moving. And Noah's Ark, the Space Create, you know, the Fisher Peak thing, the Fox Theater, so we'll take a look at all of those. I have to bring one other item, and I'll just get council's thoughts on this. The Tourism Board, the last meeting that we had, you know, they've been working on that Highway of Legends thing of going around all the way around to Walsenburg. And I guess they had a, they have a board on that Highway of Legends, and they just asked if the city felt as a group that we should have someone on that board. I kind of feel in some sense, no, because that's outside of our jurisdiction, but just some thoughts, and if somebody wants to do it on their own, I guess that would be okay too. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Ms. Grego?
No. Oh, there I am, okay, sorry. I see the value in being involved in that, and I also see your statement as being valid about that's not within the city limits, but the beginning and probably the ending, according to somewhere in between, will include the city of Cheney, I just don't know. I can't do it, but maybe somebody else on council can. I think it's important. Maybe somebody from Tourism Board might want to do it.
Well, I think they are, I'm not sure if they have somebody or not, I'll find out later on. Ms. Ogletree?
I totally agree with Ms. Grego.
Okay. Mr. Shu?
Yeah, I kind of agree with the ladies that maybe the Tourism Board, so maybe somebody in our council would like to volunteer too.
Okay. Mr. Goodall?
I have no comment on that or like, for the time to participate in something like that right now. We have a lot going on.
You're right. Mr. DiBono?
Well, I was recently asked to be on the Poor Wood and Veterans Board, so, and also possibly the partnership for joint freeze, so.
Okay.
I'll pass.
Okay, that's fine. Just getting the temperature of council. Mr. Williamson? Mr. Williamson?
I have lost him, Mayor.
Okay. Anyhow, like I said, I kind of have that same feeling, we're all pretty tied up with either our jobs or with what we're doing already for the, you know, in-city work ourselves. So I'll just put it back to the Tourism Group, if they want to have somebody on their board, on that board to represent, that's fine. So we'll just go that route. Mike, do you have anything else that you want to bring forward?
I do, Mayor, I appreciate it. Just as an FYI, as you may or may not know, the Kipnacet group is trying to purchase the property from Holy Trinity. They've submitted a plat, and with the submission of a plat in our historic preservation district, you have to submit a historic protection plan. And that may be required at the discretion of council. I wonder if the legislature knows that that's out there. And also, the, with that, it's a very good possibility that rather than go through the full-blown plating process upfront, we would do a subdivision to convey property only with the possibility of a development agreement to meet all the requirements coming forward. I know that they're, they've been trying to close for a while, and I think they are there, but to approve the plat, this is an option that Georgie and Karen McCool have come up with to move it along. So I wondered if that council would know, and I don't know if, you know, there's no decisions here, but I just just wanted to get your, take your temperature on that one.
Well, I think from our end, I would say, you know, council can speak for themselves, but from my end, I would say, you know, just look at the best avenue, the best regulations that they gotta go through to move that forward. I know they've been working on it for a couple of years now. So does council have any particular thoughts? Ms. Grego? No? Ms. Ogletree?
No, I agree with what you just said.
Mr. Shu?
Yeah, I agree with you. We need to move as fast as we can. We've been trying to get that taken care of for quite a while.
I know. Mr. Goodall?
Yeah, I got like three phones going off here. My lovely wife is disconnecting this business phone. Upfront is driving me nuts. I would refer to Ms. McCool for sure. She's the professional that we hired, and I would rely heavily on her advice. I don't think we, she thinks we should proceed on this. I think that would be the smart route.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. DiBono?
Yes, sir, move forward, yes, he did.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
I got disconnected, I missed that, but it seemed as though there's a fairly strong consensus on council already, so I'll defer for comment.
Well, just to let you know, Mike, do you want to kind of just briefly go over that again so that he'll get an understanding of what you said?
Sure, the Holy Trinity property, that the school and the area, there's like four lots that they're trying to subdivide, well, subdivision in the historic preservation calls for quite a few reports and possibly an historic protection plan and such, so in order to expedite the actual sale, we would go with subdivision for events of property only, and then a development agreement that they would come back and do all the reports as required. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Mike?
One last thing. We've been sort of holding our own, and we've been giving some good reins, but water restrictions, the heat, we're seeing a huge spike in usage, and be prepared, I think we're going, going to have to go to the next level of water restrictions. That'll be odd even type of situation, but I'll leave it up to Mark and Gil with the wire, but just wanted to give council a heads up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Downs, do you have anything that you want to comment on?
I don't, Mayor, thank you. I was not expecting that, I couldn't, but no, thank you, I have nothing to add.
Okay. Well, with that, I think we've covered, you know, quite a bit of stuff this evening, and thank you for all the information and the input. We just gotta get a direction as to how we're going to, who comes first, basically, on all of these things for work sessions upcoming. I think that's gonna be the thing, and I'll work that out with Mike. So with that, we'll end our work session. The time is now six oh six. We end this work session, and we'll see you next Tuesday. Thank you.